We will go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, April 25, uh, City of Solon Regular City Council meeting. That's certainly what we did.
What would you like to do by United States of America and to the Republic of the religious hands? One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, a role called Duncan, here's Gabriel Kramer.
Yeah.
Here.
Our sympathy pledge, we pledge promote sympathy by listening, being respectful of others and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our doing. Want to perfect and approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda?
No changes. I'll move to perfect and approve the agenda.
I'll second Duncan, yes, yes, Gabriel, yes, Whitehead.
Yes.
Uh, next is citizens speak, this is for time for anybody that would like to speak on our non agenda items, sorry anybody. And we do try, uh, load it to three minutes.
Oh, that's fine. A little dry and crisp, and I don't know if I'm in the right place or not. I was asking for, um, let's say looking for a stop sign. I live at four one four Wyndham Drive in Old Mill Creek subdivision. And from Beck Drive down to Highway three eighty-two, it's a three tenths of a mile stretch with no stop sign and people locked down that street. I know speed humps are a big no-no, and that pain would mess with them in the winter, I understand that. I'm not asking for anything like that, but just to slow them down a little bit, so I don't know if I'm at the right place about this, or what, how do I need to address this more? I guess.
Is there a spot where you'd recommend it at any specific intersection?
Viking Drive, Viking, yeah. Because that is, it doesn't, I drove it today, it's just a, it's a long stretch, it's downhill. I mean, anywhere just to slow them down, my kids are grown up, but I lived out there for same house for fifteen years. I guess my property is on the way, I'm not here for that, yes, it is frustrating. But I'm just, and there's so many kids out there that play, part of both areas, it's just, it's even dangerous. And when I know the sheriff's department, they got their hands full with the other stuff. You don't need to call them, bother them about people going fast, but it doesn't feel good to call them, because by the time they get there, they're gone. And so I'm just asking to see if you look into it, just to try to slow people down.
Now, the street parking makes it even more difficult, because it's narrow, it's very inward, very, and, uh, yes, it's, uh, my grandkids living over there on my east of Viking Drive. It's that got nothing worse.
Yeah, since they started building back, I mean, it's just, and there's two entrances and exits Old Mill Creek. But majority of people there live or work in, from university, core Iowa City, they use that one, Cedar Rapids, they use the other one, but Wyndham is a, it's like an interstate here. And I live three houses up from the highway, and they're still flying by my house. So I just, like I said, I don't know if I'm at the right place, but if I could say, look into it, I'd be appreciative of the safety of the kids.
Thank you for bringing that up, we have a streets committee that will send that to and review it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would like to second what he said, I live further up Wyndham Drive and by, um, their lane, and they flying down there too, they get, until they get to the end of the street, then they have to stop because you can't go in first. They're, they're going, they're just speeding down.
Thank you. Any other assistance tonight on non agenda items? All right, takes us down to the agenda, this would be the approval of minutes from the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Approval of the list of bills, treasury reports and transfers, billing permits, there was one that Suzie sent out to us, and then the girls on the run event. Sir, anybody from girls on the run this evening?
No, I'm, I'm wondering if that's who was on that first meeting and they didn't realize the two different meetings. This is, um, this will be the second time that the girls on the run are going to be using the SRNA for their event, they did a fall event. All went well, they've been working with Brody and I since December, no concerns with this event application.
All right, Duncan, yes, Gabriel, yes, Kramer, yes, Whitehead.
Yes.
Takes down to the fire department, uh, report, we had our agency meeting a week ago. Uh, with that, we did lose, uh, one member of the department. Uh, we're still at, we've thirty-three or thirty-four members with that with one application in, so, uh, the department's feeling really good about the numbers that they had after reported that they added several, uh, additional firefighters. Still been pretty busy, um, with them. I can share the, the details or the, the reports with it, but again, I, at the last report that we had, it was just some, some big events or calls that they responded to and, and really amazing time with that, they shared their fiscal, uh, twenty-four or their calendar twenty-four report, and the average time on scene continues to be amazing, it's between eight and say thirteen minutes based on if it's in city or out in the townships with that. So from the time the page goes out to when they're on scene, uh, we have a, just a tremendous gang, uh, over there with it, but I don't have anything else, uh, to share with that. Sheriff's Office report?
Uh, I don't have anything, uh, yes, anything for me is worse, I will know the Wyndham Drive, you all heard. Yeah, control, there are any others people in here, keep an eye on.
Thanks, Kirby, thanks so much, and thank you, appreciate it. Public work director report?
I wanted to share that we are in the process of, um, filling the public work specialist position. Um, the, uh, crew has been very busy working on the, getting the, um, parks ready. Restrooms are all getting, um, kind of sprucing up. Um, if anyone encounters a bathroom that's not yet open, it's because it's still under some, um, repairs for placing some sinks and toilets and partitions, and that just takes a little bit of time. We have, um, um, had a, uh, burnt some prairie areas last week, and then, um, also work is underway on the new, uh, volleyball courts. And have two courts, they're going to be shifting a little closer to the timberdome. Um, so that's underway, that's a great project, I want to give a shout out, um, uh, to Tom Roscoe, who's here, he's our public, uh, seasonal help who's made an early entrance to help us out, uh, this year, and then also Dustin Fordice, who's also coming back as seasonal help as well. So things are, uh, things are going well.
All right. Library report, please.
Yeah, um, National Library Week is next week, and we're in proclamation of just a few minutes, but, um, that's your opportunity to thank your favorite library worker, to, um, appreciate that all of the community library does for this, uh, community, and you have a chance to share your favorite story about the library, maybe it's a memory, maybe why you love the library. You can do that in person with a piece of paper, we also have an online form you can fill out, we love to get that feedback, um, it's just a great way to boost the morale and just hear those different stories about what the library is important to you. Um, in the packet that the council received, I did include the two pages about IMLS and LSTA, there's a lot of acronyms going on, a lot of different concerning legislation that potentially will impact libraries. A lot of times people go, that can't possibly be us, it's federal stuff, but it is most definitely us if the, uh, Institute of Museum and Library Services goes away at the federal level. There are many things that the State Library of Iowa will no longer be able to provide to all of the different libraries in Iowa, um, interlibrary loan is a huge one, they host our website, there's different training and accreditation, and the second page sort of lists that out, I'm happy to provide that to anybody who's interested. We need to talk to our legislators, we need to explain why these things are important. Um, with interlibrary loan, basically, our small library has the collection the size of the entire state of Iowa. So we can get you that item that maybe we can't afford to buy, but we can borrow it, we can't possibly pay for the postage to make that happen. Um, that Iowa shares delivery system that gives us those deliveries two times a week, that is invaluable, especially in small town libraries. Because you just can't afford to have all of that in one collection, so something really important to keep in mind. Um, we also have some great programs going on right now, we've got Baby Time that will finish out in April that we are collaborating with the community center. So that's every Monday morning at nine fifteen, you can go to Baby Time at the community center and then stay for free at Top Time. And Wednesday's Drawing Club for those fourth through eighth graders, and we had a very enthusiastic bunch there today, um, get to come and learn new drawing techniques, share their creativity, have a snack, hang out time for that really fun age group of four to three. Our final fun for all night of the season will be at the community center on Saturday the twelfth. Starts at six o'clock with gym games, and then seven o'clock will be Moana Two with Popboard again from Tyson's of Corahville. So look forward to seeing you all at the library meeting.
Excellent. City and county report.
Yeah, Trail Ranch Construction has started out in part three, Mexico brought in some equipment, they'll be installing utilities here in the next few weeks. Uh, we've been reviewing various documents and applications for the school and a few other places, uh, continuing work with Scott, from with that Kevin and, uh, Cammy on that, and then, uh, looking at, trying to get some information put together to share with council, and an upcoming council meeting on the ways for everybody.
Takes us to the, for me, National Library Week, uh, April sixth through twelve, was, uh, shared with us during her, uh, report. And whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space for individuals of all ages to explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect and thrive. Whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. Whereas libraries protect the right to read, think and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. Now therefore be it resolved that I Dan O'Neil, Mayor of the City of Solon, proclaim April sixth through twelve, twenty twenty-five is National Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources and celebrate all ways that the library draws us together as a community.
We have several representatives from our different boards here. Yeah, exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to new business item fifteen, board adjustments, variances, variance.
Here, so, um, this was, the board adjustment met, um, March twenty-eighth. And this was a variance request by Mike Wadley. Mike has a, uh, existing garage, Mike lives on Highway one, and, uh, at four oh five South Market Street and kind of has that wood fence kind of there, uh, in the front there, um, kind of between Casey's and automatic on that same side of the street. So back behind the house, which you can't see, there's a detached garage and it's been there for a long time, um, and Mike would like to replace it, Mike also is on the board of adjustment. Uh, so, um, because he's on the board of adjustment, he did abstain from voting, uh, so what he's asking for is to build a little bit bigger garage in the same location and, um, needed a three foot variance to, uh, uh, basically put the garage, the garage is non-conforming now, but to replace it in that same, almost same footprint, um, he would need a three foot variance. The, uh, board adjustment did grant the variance, um, this is a very narrow lot, um, to to put the garage where you would drive in traditionally, um, would be a pretty long drive, um, block off almost the entire second half of the lot, um, so they felt it was a reasonable request. And, um, didn't have any concerns.
Questions or? Uh, do we have a motion on the variance?
I will leave to the variance board, I'll say.
Duncan?
Yes.
Earlier?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item sixteen, hardest acres subdivision concept.
So let's give a little bit of a backstory here, um, so the, as council will recall, this came before the, um, annexation of this forty acres owned by, um, Raymond Griesel came to the council last year. Uh, and, um, at that time, the council did look at some concepts they, uh, that were associated with the annexation. Uh, the council wanted to ensure that the development on the, uh, along the highway was commercial and was consistent with our future land use plan. And there was a conditional zoning agreement that was approved as part of the annexation. Um, at the time of the preliminary plat, it was determined that because of the access and, um, to Highway one, that a traffic study would be, be needed. So, uh, Watts Group is the developer in this case, and they did, uh, conduct a traffic study, and that was submitted to the DOT. So that has been happening in this last year. And so that process is complete, they, uh, sent over the, the concept that you have, uh, to city staff to review, city staff reviewed it, they, uh, provided some comments, and then we met with the streets committee um, a few weeks ago, which is John and Andrew, um, and asked for, um, you know, their feedback and input. Um, the, there's some unique, unique situations with the, uh, the access road, which Dave will go through. Also, they're proposing an outlot for the area, um, that is, uh, that is expected to be commercial. Um, we shared that we weren't necessarily certain how the council would feel about that coming in as an outlot. Um, so I, I recommend that Dave kind of talk through some of the scenarios, and then, then we can move on to some of the more general comments about the the proposed plat.
One of the, uh, things that we're competing with here is the Iowa Street, uh, access of the Viking Drive and the distance over to Highway one. So DOT will require that that intersection is pushed back a certain distance before they can have that, mainly from a stacking standpoint, they don't want people waiting to turn on the Highway one and blocking that, and then somebody turns from Highway one onto the road, they want to turn south, and it creates a problem with the traffic flow and starts to cause backup on Highway one. There isn't that much traffic on Iowa Street currently, uh, but nobody developed the south, that may change, uh, this is in order to get Iowa Street hooked back up so that the lot that Agmone owns currently still has access. And, uh, we, we didn't want to take that out, um, private property down where the veterinary and AC, eating AC building is. So in order to continue Iowa Street, that location is shifted slightly to the west in order to comply with that distance that DOT has stipulated. Um, looking at that, uh, turn lane configuration on Highway one, there is, as you come south, it veers off slightly and gets the cars out of the main traffic flow according to the concept, and then turns on the Viking Drive, because we're coming from the south, going north, there would be a, uh, the center of lane that you originally left go on to this. According to what, uh, so that, that's what the traffic study results, uh, indicated, and that's what Iowa, Iowa Department of Transportation has reviewed, and they've, uh, given some instruction on that separation. So the, the plant has been put together with those considerations in mind. Uh, we also looked at, um, the, the street configuration. If you look at the distance from Viking Drive on the west intersection with May Street, that distance from that intersection back to West Street, neither one is pretty long. So we asked them to consider putting in some midlock crosswalks. Uh, and those enter into that outlot B in the center, and you can go through the outlot and get down to Viking Drive. Just looking at pedestrian friendly accommodations, so somebody doesn't have to go from one spot and walk all the way down the block to get back to Viking Drive. Uh, it provides some intermediate, uh, pedestrian accommodation there. So that was one of the comments that I had for them, and they, they've added that through some outlets, midlock on those streets. Um, utilities have all been laid out to serve all the way over to Outlet F, and, um, I think there's some discussion as far as whether we leave that as an outlaw, or if council wants to see that, you know, something else, I'll let Cammy kind of take it from there.
Yeah, thank you, Dave, um, I want to just get back to this Iowa Street, you know, so it's my understanding that this is a temporary access until we know how that, that, uh, that next develop, that next parcel to the south would develop. Um, so can you talk a little bit about, you know, the materials, would that remain gravel, how would that? How would that work, Dave?
So the intersection is shown to be paved, and then there is a gravel transition from the end of the paved section back to the existing gravel road on Iowa. Uh, and again, uh, if that's temporary in nature and the area to the south develops, there's an opportunity for West Street to be able to serve that. And Iowa Street really doesn't serve a function at that point, and that intersection can be removed. There wouldn't be any need for that in the future because the, uh, the air conditioning on the veterinary clinic have direct access off of Highway one. Now, before we get away with that, we would want to get their permission, but that's certainly an option.
And we talked about whose responsibility that would be to, you know, take that intersection or that, take that access away, I don't know that we, in our meeting, ever came to the, I mean, I think it's our expectations, it would be Watts Group.
Yes, if, if we got to a point where that was no longer necessary, we'd want that closed off, uh, have that intersection removed if the, uh, the business to the south is in agreeance with that. And we'd want to have that done as, as part of a later step in this, once that is determined whether or not it needs to be there.
It's John, Andrew, did that kind of summarize our meeting?
I see for the most part.
Um, so I, I would say as far as, um, as far as the, the proposed street, the turn lanes, the access on Highway one, um, if there's any questions or concerns, I think it would be important to know those now, and then if there's any other concerns associated with the general layout, that outlot um, or anything else in the development, you know, those are the kind of things that, uh, we're interested in, and I know the streets committee felt that this was um, really a, uh, a concept that really required full full view by the city council before it moved on through planning and zoning, uh, because this does lay out uh, a little differently than the concept that was presented in annexation, um, it's a major impact to the community, uh, in this northern part of the, the city. And, uh, it also has, plays a significant role in the future development of the parcel adjacent to it and the connections to Old Mill Creek.
One thing, just looking through it, uh, just from a green space parks standpoint, the, the ponds, the outlet ponds or outlot ponds, is that what thoughts are for providing the park space, the green space? Uh, I know of your development, just west of town, there's a park that's probably the next phase that's going to be going in there, so just wondered what your guys' thoughts were with that.
Yeah, oh, so if, if you're looking at the actual concept itself, Outlet C, we have plans to, to put a park in there. That would be, then obviously you have the water detention on the northwest and southeast side, um, so, yeah.
So Lot C is going to be the only part that's going to be in this subdivision?
Well, I, Outlet B and, and C, so Outlet B would be center of the concept there, and then C towards the southwest corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't see that Outlet C.
Well, Outlet B is listed as a private open space, how is that? Your plan to continue that as private, or would that be a park essentially covered? It could be either. So I think that does probably the question, Outlet C is, is pretty small, and if we have a trail going through Outlet B, that might be something where we could put some amenities and have that as a central place, that's a lot more green space for park space.
Yeah, I feel like that would be consistent with what we've done with the, the other developments as far as having that, that green space and and, uh, items on there, the other one, I just want to talk Outlet, I think it's F on there, uh, the area that'd be commercial. My preference would be to have it come in as a commercial versus an outlot, I know there's discussion when this first came up as a, a concept with it, uh, around a desire to have it be a hundred percent residential with it, and I know that we have the conditional zoning, and I, not that we haven't talked through, um, previously on that. But I could see where, if it came in as an outlot, that, then it could make it appear or feel that it would be a lower priority to have that commercial space, and as we talked about, especially that, uh, highway commercial, uh, in our land use map that if it's listed as an outlot, if we aren't having it ready to go, that it just makes it that much harder for it to become that commercial highway as we have in our land use map, that's just my thought, I don't hear from everybody else on that, but those were the two things that jumped out on the concept, otherwise, I, I do like the layout of it, knowing that there's the park space on there, but, like, any thoughts?
As long as that green space gets integrated, so that there's amenities for population order to that. Um, I'll just hurt the city staff expertise a little bit, but again, I would like to make sure that the commercial use goes to commercial use on that, has a little bit of, behind it. We want to make sure that that highway continues to develop, because this is not just a protection.
Dan, okay for you to comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say that we totally recognize and acknowledge the city's, uh, desire there to make sure we're ensuring the right, um, type of use there. Um, we've been very thoughtful and intentional about pursuing and researching the, the right type of commercial use. Um, look at a grocer, look at a C store, you know, a church, um, have yet to identify anything in full transparency, so we're we, we know that if it's an outlaw, that that gives us the opportunity to still collaborate with the city in the future. Um, but we have, we're hesitant just because we have yet to find the right user, um, so it's, but totally acknowledge and, and get it, so.
Kevin, from the conditional zoning that we had on there, do you have any thoughts on it coming in as an outlaw versus coming in as commercial with the?
It has to come, or it has to be developed as commercial under the conditional zoning agreement. I mean, I can also, if we do the agreement for this one, just reiterate that to you, that, uh, that's what it's going to be in the future.
And, but I guess my other question is, is it going to be all, is that going to be all one lot? Is that going to be a split up lot, or you just going to have one big commercial lot, because I, I just don't know, we want something, I'm not trying to jump the gun on this or anything, but that, I mean, that would be, that would be a gigantic building if it was used as a whole commercial lot.
Yeah.
Sure, you're looking at three and a half acres there, right, um, and because we have not yet identified a user, we were reluctant to, you know, is it one building, is it two, we just, we haven't got there now, um, there's been a lot of work, I'll tell you, that's gone into that, um, and, uh, just have not been successful yet thus far, that doesn't mean that we won't continue to look for the right user and collaborate with the city and, and, um, but thus far, we haven't, you know, we haven't, we haven't landed on anything yet, so.
So Dave, I just said.
So Dave, I just said for that trap, would they have access in the Highway one or does the traffic spaces know for the out, for the outlet? Or they have to go off of Viking?
No, that outlaw has the access on Viking Drive.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And. And we recognize we couldn't do anything on the outlaw without further engagement with the city, so.
And, and to expand on that, that was part of the intent and list should as an outlaw. There's, it would have to come back. Not just from a zoning standpoint, but we have to come back as a preliminary plat again to, to actually have a disability of a lot. So there's another opportunity to. Again, redo that, make sure the council, the city's council, future councils. Can, can uh meet their needs and their expectations, you know.
Duncan, any thoughts?
Yeah, go ahead.
Lauren?
Oh, thank you.
Any action we need to?
I just think they were looking for some feedback before they started going over and engineering and stuff, assuming.
Okay, thanks for coming in. All right, that takes us to item seventeen, purchase agreement, one hundred South Cedar Street. Council discussed the possible action on the purchase agreement for one hundred South Cedar Street.
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start with a little background and Kevin can run through the actual agreement. Um, discussion about this possible purchase, um. It began, um, as council had discussions about the future of the fire station next door, the old fire station. Um, there was general, general. The general idea that I think was the consensus that as uh city hall outgrew this space that. There was an opportunity to expand into the old fire station. However, over the past several months, as the city has acquired the parcels or the, the properties. Uh, on the block across the street here, um, the. Conversations and ideas continue to circulate about the uh. The comprehensive plan to develop Main Street in the downtown area out. Um, in addition to as we can grow east, west, and. You know, the highest best use of the old fire station building, um. You know, and what value it could bring to our downtown area. Right now, it's housing our uh snowplows. And our street sweeper, um, the council has, um. Council has indicated that, you know, the building. Could become an integral part of our downtown experience. And that would leave no place for city hall to grow over time in the years. If this building next door is sold. And um. Council had, um, you know, asked Kevin and I to reach out to the property owner of Bosh. And see if there was an interest in a sale of the property. Uh, he had indicated that he was interested in a swap of the Bosh and the old fire station. So that was part of the conversation, um. Uh, that, that started and stopped periodically over the last years. Ultimately, uh. That idea fizzled, however, the council did still express interest. In uh have, having a future city hall site at Bosh Chapel. From there, uh, the council engaged Kevin in negotiations. With the, with the property owner's attorney.
And so basically, the agreement's in your packet, it's a pretty standard uh. Purchasing agreement for property in Iowa. So basically, the purchase price will be one million, one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, closing will be May first of this year. And then the property owner will pay all the normal uh. Costs that, and any other regular, just like when you buy a house, seller pays the property taxes though. May first, though, one ye, almost two years of property taxes that'll be credited against our. Credited against our uh purchase price. So this property will. Continue to be taxed for another, I mean, paid for another couple of years, but we'll get that purchase price back. Uh, the transfer tax will be paid for by the, by the seller. And then we'll pay the cost of recording. So at this point, we get this agreement done, uh, approved. We'll get it over to Mr. Lynn, uh, who's indicated that I believe he will sign that tomorrow if, if the council passes this. And then we will uh look towards a May first closing.
Questions, comments?
There are no, there are no tenants in that building anymore. The, the lease on the building ended in December.
And so the, the, the ended in December, we, we know. That heat and stuff's been on all winter. Or there.
We have the right to end the agreement to go into the property, give them forty-eight hours notice to, to make sure. I mean, we're buying the bit of property as is, but and like, we, we're going to make sure that.
Yes, we want to make sure we have a bunch of water.
Yes, the, the risk of loss and everything is about him until we close.
Okay.
And he has to remove all his personal property from the property before we close also.
I know, before the meeting started, there were some questions on that. Al, did that answer some, some questions?
I was just curious what would happen to this building? If, if. I mean, if this, that, that may be a great city hall, but. Um, what would happen to this building on the market?
I think right now that would be TBD as we put together a, a plan, um. This would be. This acquisition would be one large puzzle piece to everything down here. Um, with it and knowing for sure what the future would have for city hall would determine how we, what the map.
I think outside of this, the, the building. Guys, if you go through that and decide.
So the fire station isn't part of the sale or purchase?
No, no, no.
Not traded?
No, no.
What is square footage on the upper floor of Bosh? Is that bigger than the square footage here? How much?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers.
He's looking it up on the accessory side.
Kevin's looking that up right now.
I guess it's probably about two.
Yeah, it's two.
Well, but if you're going to have a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you want everybody at the same level.
Okay, forty-six twenty-two on the top level, forty-three twenty in the basement.
Okay, what's the square footage?
Well, let's see if I listed it up here. I'll make you this quicker. Thirty-nine ninety-two total.
With that, uh, any further discussion on the purchase reasons or a motion?
I would like that. Um, I think with Bosh property keeps city hall on Main Street, even though it's East. Main, that was a consideration as you look out. All you guys are developers and movers and shakers, you try to look out five, ten years, you know. Where are we going to go purchase property if we need to build a city hall? Uh, and what's that cost? This just seemed like a pretty viable option. It was before I came on council, right before I was, you know, we had this debate. And about Bosh, many people in town thought we should pull the trigger at that time rather than build this. I think this is a very viable property. We've had people inquire about, oh, sure, this building, uh, quite often. And so I don't think from the standpoint of being able to sell this, I think this, this would, property would go pretty easily. And then as you look at. What this can be and. I'd have to look up, you made a good point about taxes. I, 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 I need to look that up, what, how long can we set? And absorb the taxes, and what that would be on those, those properties. I don't know how much that is, but anyway, uh, I think. You know, we all think if interest rates would come down, things would pop even more, but they're not right now, but. Uh, we've had interest in, in that now we own the houses and. The Bosh, so, so. And that moves right with our vision of the city that we did a few years ago. Uh, having that upper, like a mall area, I think originally Kami helped me with this. This street gets blocked off. It is not too scary anymore, and that creates a mall effect uh with everything on Main Street. So. All of that added in, and we had an opportunity, and I think at fair price now that where we kind of, where we got this thing too, that. I, I think it's um. I think it's a good move. I've done several sight plans for that. I do have a residential, commercial. And that Al's doing, so. Got a lot of potential.
The motion on the purchase agreement, I'll move to uh move forward with the purchase agreement on your self Cedar Street. All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Partly, yes. Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item eighteen, resolution, uh, number twenty-five eighteen, setting the public hearing for the fiscal twenty-six budget. Kim?
Yeah, this is a, a resolution to set the public hearing. Now, this is for the full budget. Tonight was just for the levy rate. So this meeting on the twenty-third will be a special meeting at five-thirty. Here, and uh, that will likely be the only agenda item on the twenty-third. Um, and so again, there will be a public hearing. And then a resolution to approve and adopt FY twenty-six budget. So this just sets that public hearing. For April third, April twenty-third, um, at five-thirty.
Have a motion to approve resolution. Now, sir. Duncan?
Yes.
Partly, yes. Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to other business, uh, council committees?
Uh, let's see, it sounds like Streets are going to be talking about stop signs. And um, the Utilities Committee, I'm going to be reaching out. Dave and I have been meeting with um. Uh, McBride Point, who are interested in hooking on to the Gallery Acres water line. And um, so I will be reaching out to the Utilities Committee on that. Um, that's not a surprise. We've known that for several months that they wanted to do that. The council just wasn't ready to entertain. Any additional add-ons to that line until uh we had some um time to see how Gallery Acres was functioning. Uh, to get well three, well four repaired, and then also to get, get in, get past some drought recovery. So all those things have been completed uh for the most part, and so while Dave and I have been um. Engaging in some staff conversations, we'd like the Utilities Committee to get involved in those conversations before it comes to full council. Um, let's see, Personnel Committee, um, we've been uh actively um. Just working on filling some positions. Um, also, our annual health plan renewal um is open right now. And that meeting with staff members was today. Um, our, uh, our, our annual health renewal is, begins on May first. And then, um. The city school, we have the SRNA twenty draft that's gone out to Dan and uh. John?
Me.
Yep, Steve, Billy. And so really, we've gotten this down to just a few sections with the school. We met right after Christmas. We made a lot of great progress. We were waiting for them to, to send the draft over. And so I sent that out to everybody, and then at some point, I'll get us all together so we can kind of. Make sure we're on the same page for those improvements and then get our responses back to the school.
But I would say, yeah, I mean, it, it, it has been a pretty document productive. Um, back and forth. It's taken a while, without a doubt, but I think it's as thorough as it can get. I think both sides have uh tried to look at their best interest, and we have had some compromise and. Uh, we got a little ways to go yet. There are a couple sticking points in there that as a city, we'd like to look at a little bit further, but. Uh, it's been really good dialogue back and forth between the schools and law overdue. Uh, we haven't had a good review of this twenty-eight agreement for a long time, so it's been worthwhile.
I think, I think taking, taking our time has been key to that, not try and rush through it and just make sure that everything is. Done properly.
Yeah.
All on committees.
All right. City court, you have some? Kami?
Uh, wanted to remind everybody about that meeting on the twenty-third that will be a special meeting. Also, we did receive a site plan from uh for the, the Lakeview West, or I'm sorry. Lakeview West parking lot, uh, the one across from the SRNA. They're going to be submitting those into different um site plans. So we did receive that yesterday, and so planning and zoning will be looking at that at the end of the month.
Any counsel comments? Mayor comments, just uh with us having open positions on it, just a huge thank you. Uh, Kami and Suzie are up here short handed in the office with it, but just holding down the fort here, safe with the Public Works gang. Um, thank you for starting a little earlier this year as we get things going with that, but. Um, just a huge thank you for everything this is done without our just amazing staff with that. So thank you for. Everybody to, for keeping things going for us. Uh, lastly, we have a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?